November eleventh, November, yeah, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty to order for the please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, which stands on nation under God, in the good will, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Priest, I believe you're up, something else to read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Considering the governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public hearing of the town of Burlington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BCAT Government Cable Access Television, BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our Webex Cisco online meeting, or via phone at four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight, meeting number one seven three five seven two four three eight four. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, by commenting on the coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function in the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone seven eight one two seven zero one six three five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest, appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, uh, we'll go right to the appointment.
Before that, uh, Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, uh, all the votes, uh, will need to be roll call vote tonight, and, uh, we do have a public hearing, so, uh, Selectman Priest and Betty will be monitoring, uh, the Facebook Live feed, and, uh, I have the phone number here, seven eight one two seven zero one six three five, for when we get to that part of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, first up, we have, uh, Chief Kent here, uh, with an appointment in the police department.
Good evening, thank you. Um, tonight, we have a, uh, requesting a dispatcher, a police dispatcher appointment. Um, this is for an anticipated vacancy, January first. Um, Gail Fay, who has been a mainstay on the day shift since I've been here, um, as a police dispatcher, um, she has over thirty-one years with the town, um, will be retiring on January first. Um, she'll be missed, uh, she brings a lot of calm and common sense to, uh, um, the other end of the phone when she's receiving calls and dispatch, and, uh, she'll be moving on to retirement, and in anticipation, so we can have someone up and running and trained for January first when Gail leaves, um, we'd like to make an appointment. Um, this, uh, person where I'm requesting appointment for was one of twenty people who were interviewed by a, uh, two captains, two sergeants, a police officer, and a dispatcher. Um, I had an opportunity to look at the questions they were asked, I can tell you it was a very, uh, intense interview, but, um, after all was said and done, um, they recommended, and I'm recommending the town administrator, Melissa Nieman, the appointed police emergency dispatcher. Her background in human resources, she has, uh, a human resources certificate from Northern Essex Community College, and also a bachelor of arts in sociology and criminal justice from Keene State College. She's currently employed as a human resource specialist for the city of Nashville, New Hampshire. Prior to that, she was a benefits administrator for the Mentor Network out of Lawrence, and prior to that, she was a human resources representative, um, in North Hampton. So, she comes very highly recommended by the interview panel, I think she'll be a good fit, so I would request that Melissa Nieman be appointed police dispatcher effective tomorrow, so she can start her training.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Melissa H. Nieman to the position of dispatcher in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Move. A move by Bob, second by?
Second.
Jimmy, uh, we'll have a roll call vote, any comments, um, before we have the vote? Uh, Mr. Priest?
Uh, no.
No, Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, first, let me, um, congratulate and thank Gail Fay for her years of service, uh, with the police department, I've known Gail for the entire time she's been over there, she's always done a outstanding job, and congratulations to Melissa, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, this, uh, the same thing, I just want to congratulate Melissa for joining us, uh, it's a highly, uh, educated department, and a lot of that information starts right there at dispatch, and, uh, we wish her luck, and, uh, wish Gail good luck too in her retirement.
Mr. Tegus?
Thank you, Mr. Jim, yeah, I also want to congratulate, uh, Gail on her retirement, um, uh, being a dispatcher, uh, you know, police officers go on individual calls, but a police dispatcher is involved in every call, so they're on the, uh, the conduit between the public and, uh, and the officers out there, and, um, Gail has done a fantastic job, and I just wanted to thank her for her years of work and service, and, uh, welcome Melissa aboard.
Well, I, I will say congratulations to Gail, but I don't think she's going anywhere for a little while yet, right? We still have her for a little bit?
On January first.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that back in again, Gail, uh, but you do do a fantastic job up there, uh, at this point, we'll go for the roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hogan? Uh, are you on mute, sorry, Bob? Yes, I saw the head nod. Yeah. Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tegus?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
And Mr. Miranda, yes. Five zero zero, ready, all in favor, but congratulations, Chief.
Thank, thank you very much, as always, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Mr. Sagorino, is a public one, I believe?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a public hearing on tax classification, um, the next item is a regular public hearing for tax classification, uh, if I could ask a member to read the notice into the record, and then, uh, Mr. Chairman to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Jimmy, do you have that? Thank you, you're on mute, Jim.
Here we go, I'm, we're gonna several screens at the same time, so. All right, uh, notice of public hearing, the Board of Selectmen hereby give notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty at six oh five P M. on the classification of all taxable property for the determination of the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of taxable property for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. The public hearing will take place during the WebEx meeting with the sign-in information , uh, below. The Board of Selectmen public hearing notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times Chronicle and may be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org. The meeting, uh, may be watched live on Facebook Meeting, facebook.com, BCAT Government Coverage, and, uh, the sign-on information is there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tegus, uh, now we're gonna, um, I have a motion to open public meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Bob, and roll call vote, please, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Hogan? Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tegus?
Yes.
Mr. Priest? Where are you, Nick? Nick, I can't hear you. Can't even see you.
Looks like you might have a connection issue.
My.
If you can see me, yeah.
Okay, I got you now, I just heard you.
You see me?
Yeah. I can't see you, but I can hear you, uh, and myself, Mr. Miranda, yes, so public meeting is open. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, would you like to start with the tax classification process?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, as the board knows, uh, this is the conclusion of a process that started a year ago, uh, when we set budget guidelines for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, this tax rate will encompass all of the spending voted by town meeting for the current fiscal year. Uh, the assessors have set the values for the property in the town, and now it is up for the board to determine, vote to determine, uh, how to distribute the tax levy. Uh, tonight, we have with us, uh, our assessor, Jim Dougherty, along with John Denizio and Gary Giannino, uh, to provide background information for your vote. At this point, I'd like to turn it over, uh, to the town assessor, Jim Dougherty.
Jim, you're on mute?
There you go. Some people pray for that, Joe. Good evening, gentlemen. Um, a- a- as Paul just outlined, we have one cog in the wheel, um, how this operates, starts with the FinCom, um, essentially next month, and, uh, they prepare things and, uh, make, um, um, projections where they want to be, town meeting votes a levy, as Paul mentioned, and, uh, the third element of that is the valuations, which the Board of Assessors attached with, uh, developing. So, um, you all have the package, I believe, that was provided for you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, if you'd like, I, I could just walk you through a little, Joe?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, on, um, on the second page, behind, the first page behind the cover sheet, you have in the top box just a quick summary of last year, and, um, if you'll give me your indulgence, I'll just hit a couple of the highlights, namely, the tax rate was nine point six four residentially, twenty-five dollars fifty-four commercial, the total value of the town was about seven point four billion dollars, and there was a tax levy of slightly over a hundred and seventeen million dollars. Um, the tax valuation, moving down to option A, um, will be consistent through all the options, because the valuation doesn't change, so this year's valuation is up from about seven point four five to seven point six seven. Um, tax levy is up from one seventeen three approximately to one point two three point seven, and as Paul mentioned, um, that is something that has been developed outside of, um, of the Board of Selectmen's domain and the assessors' domain. Um, having said that, what we do is we try to, um, uh, distribute the levy, this particular year, we all know that, uh, it's been a very difficult two thousand and twenty, but the citizens should know, and everybody of the Board of Selectmen are aware, these valuations are prior to the crisis, these valuations are effective on January one, two thousand and twenty. The valuations which will come up next year will be valuation date, January one twenty-one, those will be reflective of anything the pandemic or anything else has brought into play in the calendar year twenty. Um, as you will see on option one, uh, as I mentioned, you have a valuation of seven point six million, you have a tax levy of twenty-three point seven, uh, million, it equates to a levy increase of approximately five point four nine, the residential class, um, if that factor were selected, would be slightly less, add an increase of about five point, uh, three, and the commercial class would be picking up about five point six percent, again, working out to, um, to a total levy of five point four nine increase. It would result in an average, uh, residential tax bill increase of about two hundred and thirty-four dollars, or, um... Now, option, option B, I have to apologize, was, was redundant, and it was slightly different based on, um, uh, duplication error on my pot, so I would ask you to disregard B and move to C. And if you look at C, again, the tax levy is slightly different, the first option A we were looking at was one twenty-three, seven twenty-seven, um, option C is seven twenty-three nine, and, um, they're both right in the ballpark, um, either one will work, I think, uh, John Denizio can comment if he'd like to, in terms of, this one is closer to what they actually have targeted for the tax levy, um, and again, that works out to a, uh, residential tax rate of nine point nine five, and a commercial rate of twenty-five point eight four. Um, option D would be if you chose to lower the percentage that commercial industrial, um, classes picked up historically, um, generally, I don't see much of an appetite for that, um, but you can, you can see the ramifications of that, and it, it's detrimental to the residential tax, taxpayer. Um, option E is if you went to the extreme and dramatically increased the commercial class to the maximum allowed by law, um, obviously, there would be a negative, a, a positive impact for the residential people, um, catastrophic, uh, result for the commercial, so, those two are really done for demonstration purposes, and not necessarily for, um, elective purposes, but again, as Paul mentioned, this is all in the prerogative of the Board of Selectmen and no one else's domain. Um, the third one, a- again, that's if you went all the way back, uh, third page of the options, uh, option F, if you were to go to a single rate, which I, I don't think would ever happen, um, you could see the residential tax bills would go up about seventy-one percent. Um, again, if you shifted everything at the bottom, maximum levy, meaning you increased the levy amount to a hundred and thirty-six million versus the hundred and twenty-three range we're talking about, as well as increasing the class on, uh, shift to commercial, you can see the results there again, um, nothing that we need to spend time on. Um, moving to the next page, this is probably one of the most important, um, sheets. Uh, you can see in the top box, we have the fiscal twenty-one information, and basically what this shows is, it shows the extent, if we had, we mentioned earlier, a single tax rate, and it's laid out here, would be sixteen sixteen, um, and what this really shows is by the, um, ability of, of the tax base in Burlington, you can shift, and the commercial taxpayers pick up approximately thirty-six hundred dollars, um, a year of the residential tax bill, if there were a single tax rate in town. Um, again, that's up a little, you can see down below, um, two thousand and twenty was about, uh, thirty-four sixty, so it's up, um, about, you know, a hundred and ten dollars or so, um, in terms of what the benefit to the residential people is. The next screen is just a summary of last year's tax rate, um, it's an interesting thing, because if you look at the residential, everybody loves it, we're at the second lowest. You look at the commercial, and you see we're at twenty-five, and you, you say, wow, are we low compared to others? Um, if you look at some, you know, we are, but y- y- you're really gonna get into the weeds, and i- it's difficult to do those comparisons. What the town has always focused on is Waltham, which is our biggest commercial competitor, Lexington, and to a lesser extent, but coming up, Woben, because they're in the transition more from industrial to trying to get into some of the, some of the high-end, um, commercial property we have. So you can see we're at twenty-five, so we're right in the mix, we're in a good area, uh, we're not really giving anything away there. And the last page is just a summary of the historical tax, um, increases, this year, we're talking about, uh, somewhere in the mid-two hundreds, uh, last year, it was about two hundred. With that, I'll, um, I'll yield back, Joe, to whoever.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sagorino, would you like Mr. Denizio to speak at this point?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, if we could hear from John, John could probably walk us through, uh, the budget guidelines and the, and the target, uh, tax levy that we discussed last year at this time, and just refresh the board on some of those items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I just wanted to, just wanted to add quickly that, uh, as, as Paul and Jim both said, this is the final step in a long process that started a year ago, when we approved those, uh, guidelines through all the different boards, and, uh, either one of, any of these options that Jim just ran you through right now, fit within those guidelines that were approved a year ago. Uh, so when we, when we were first talking with the guidelines group at the budget summit, uh, we were talking about a five, five point five, five point six, uh, percent increase on the, on the levy, and even with COVID and all of the, uh, revenue issues that has caused, we're still, we made the, the, at, at Fall Town Meeting, we made the reductions in, in local receipts and, and the expense budgets to help offset any, any loss of revenue, so this is what was expected last fall, and it still, still fits within those guidelines.
Thank you, John. Um, Mr. Sagorino, um, would members speak now, or do you have, is Gary Giannino here to speak on this, or is he another matter?
I'm not sure if, uh, Treasurer Collected Giannino has anything he would like to add, Gary?
No, I think, uh, I think, uh, Jim and John have said it all, really, it, it is a culmination of, uh, you know, the budget guidelines from last, last spring, last week. I'm sad, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, gentlemen, we're gonna go, um, we'll, uh, go to the board members now, so let's, uh, Mike, you're in the middle of my screen, go right ahead, kid, you're up, sir.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, you may, you will recall, uh, a few weeks back, uh, at, at a budget meeting, I had expressed my desire to offset, um, portion of the tax increase with stabilization, stabilization funds and or free cash, um, these, these are extraordinary times, as we all know, and, uh, you know, I, I believe, I believe that to be, uh, inappropriate use of the stabilization fund, and I would, uh, I know at this late hour, that's, that's a difficult thing to do, but that would, that would be my, my preference, thank you.
Thank you, all right, um, Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Chairman, um, i- i- in a, when I finish my question, if, if, uh, someone could respond to Mike's comment about the, uh, the stabilization and, or free cash, and by doing something now, what does that mean next year? Uh, but my question now is, um, considering that some of these numbers are so, so close, uh, is there a, um, staff recommendation as to which one of these, uh, we might want to look at as being the final, uh, product, because they're literally very close up and down the line?
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, so I'll go to Mr. Denizio to answer that first question, please. Now, Mr. Hogan had, um, taking money out? The mic had, I'm sorry, you're right, sorry, Bob, um, that mic had, if we take money out of stabilization fund, I thought we went over that at that meeting, but could you just go over it again for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think, um, Selectman Runyon hit it on the head that at the, at this late hour, that would be very difficult to do, uh, there's lots of moving parts that would still need to happen, and given that the tax rate needs to be certified by the state, it's highly unlikely, uh, and Jim and Paul can, uh, can add to this too, that we would be able to get our tax rate set in time to send out tax bills on January one.
Thank you, and, uh, the second part of that question, I believe, Mr. Sagorino could do, oh, um, which, which one of these, uh, he asked about?
Uh, thank you.
Because their numbers are so close together?
Yep, uh, like I say, any one of these options will do the trick, um, they're all different shades, um, of sort of where the town has historically liked to end up in terms of sharing the levy, uh, between residents and businesses. Uh, if, if you were to put, put us on the spot to make a recommendation, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking, I thought that, uh, option C, uh, was the one that if we had a, if we had a pick, we would, we would probably go with.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Tegus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I sort of agree with Mike that it, this is the rainy day, however, looking at the complexity of trying to do it today, or now, uh, you know, that's a potential issue, um, but I do kind of want to, I don't want to say put on notice, but we're hearing next year is gonna be the really bad year, at least, um, so I, I want to open the door and have that, keep that conversation going about potentially using stabilization for next year, it sounds like we're gonna need something, because it's gonna be bad, a lot of people are, uh, hurting, um, you know, I, I have no objection to option C, however, I am, uh, initially leaning to option A, because it impacts the residence, uh, residents the, the least, um, so that, that, those are my thoughts, and I also, I just want to thank the, uh, financial team for all the work with this, because it's, it's, you know, it, it's not easy, and, and, and that group did a great job, uh, giving us options to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Tegus, um, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I echo similar sentiments from the rest of the board, I, you know, um, it, it concerns me that, you know, we have to consider raising the taxes the way we do, but, um, I think what's making this harder for everyone is the current situation, the, the, the COVID nineteen situation, that, you know, um, if I recall, and Paul, John, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, when we discussed this initially, we had said that this was gonna happen, the, the increase, the five percent increase was gonna happen this year, no, no matter what, COVID or not, I see Paul nodding, and John nodding, yes, so, you know, I guess in a regular year, I, I, I wonder whether or not we would consider usually, using stabilization to offset its axes, you know, where there's not a pandemic, um, knowing, at least based on all the forecasts that we're seeing, that next year is gonna be fiscally worse, um, I'm fully on board with, you know, helping out the residents, you know, but I think that it's gonna be worse next year, let's bite the bullet now, and, you know, focus on what, what we can do to remedy things, looking ahead, right? I think we should have a good line of sight to start, start that plan, start those conversations now, um, you know, and, and just bite the bullet on this one, um, you know, whether we go option A, option C, I mean, we're talking a difference of, you know, roughly ten dollars, uh, you know, over the course of a year, so, you know, um, if, if, you know, the, if, you know, Paul and John, uh, and Jim recommend, you know, option C, maybe we go, go that route and, um, you know, have that as, as our option, I, I mean, um, I'm kind of babbling now, so I'm gonna stop talking, I have no real questions, uh, but, you know, there's just, there's a lot to consider, and, you know, I know we, we've talked about this a lot, um, and I want folks who are watching, or anyone who's, you know, gonna watch this in the future, understand that, you know, we aren't just, we aren't taking this lightly, um, this is a very serious, you know, um, uh, topic to be handling, and, uh, COVID only makes it that much more so, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll yield back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest, I think the best part about that conversation, he said, I'm gonna stop talking, and he went on for another five minutes. That's why we love you, Nick, so, anyway, um, Mr. Dougherty, I have a question for you, uh, roughly two hundred and thirty dollars, you're, you're talking for the year, right?
That's correct, Joe.
On, on increase, so, divide, divided that into twelve months, and that's what roughly the residents would be paying on a base value of, uh, where is it on C?
Five seventy-four.
Yeah, five seventy-four, okay, so, that's, um, it's not an astronomical number, but it's not a good number either, I, I agree with Mike Runyon on a foot, on, on, on some of that money, but we had already talked about this long before COVID started, we had already, um, voted on this, not this actual numbers, but on how to get to this point, uh, we had a lot of conversations, the, the financial team, uh, has done a great job on this, um, what other questions here? Um, I don't think any one of us is happy about the tax rate going up to the way it is, but this isn't to do with COVID right now, next year's to do with, with the COVID thing that's going on, um, I think if we were to take option C, and then sit down with these boards, with these different, uh, uh, highway departments, school department, all these different departments, and talk to them and say, listen, that's it, we're done, we're done playing games, the school department has a huge budget, everyone has, uh, we need to really sit down and, and figure this out, because if we, if we don't do something now, uh, next year is gonna be worse for us, so, I mean, I'm in favor of option C, I believe that's what the financial analysis are telling us, uh, they're financial guys, they know better than, than we do, we look at numbers and go, okay, back and forth, so, I think at this point, um, Mr. Sagorino, if you have anything else you'd like to add to this, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion and a vote.
Uh, just a second, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, I'd like to thank the board, uh, for your comments and, and concerns, um, we hear you loud and clear, I mean, the Board of Selectmen is always, uh, impressed upon, uh, the administration and the finance team, uh, that keeping, uh, modest tax increases was paramount, uh, here in town, it wa- it was part of what makes Burlington Burlington, uh, and we do hear your message loud and clear, um, everybody has to be aware, though, it is a larger discussion in terms of determining the spending level, and, uh, fortunately, uh, for us, uh, we'll be getting back at it in a couple of weeks, we'll be sitting down again to try to develop, uh, budget guidelines for next year, uh, with the Ways and Means Committee, uh, with the School Committee, and with other, uh, elected boards and committees, and again, we'll, we'll have another opportunity at it, um, I, like I said, I do appreciate all the thoughts and the suggestions made by the board, and, uh, just so everybody at home knows, um, you know, the Board of Selectmen, um, has made it very clear has made it very clear to us as the administration in terms of wanting to keep modest taxes here in Burlington. And again, we hit the number that was planned for this year. This was the the agreed upon spending plan for this year, albeit with some COVID reductions mixed into it. But again, we'll have another opportunity as we head into what will be our most difficult year for sure. Next year, I'll have another crack at the apple. And again, I I'm expecting that the guideline setting discussion is going to be a lot longer than it typically is, and we're going to need everybody to really voice their opinions as to what they want to see for the budget next year. So that's all I have to add, Mr. Chairman. Again, we are listening to everything that you guys have to say. We will, just as a reminder, I think Town Administrator has something to add after, Mr. Chairman, but we want to ask for see if there's anyone here from the public that would like to participate as well. But just so the board members know, we do hear you loud and clear on wanting to keep taxes affordable here in Burlington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Mr. Doherty, go ahead.
As usual, you're a very able town administrator is on top. But one, I wanted to point out, just to ask, it's a public hearing. And two, Mr. Hogan is is the resident expert on this, that you're going to vote a factor. And so whether it's A or C, you're going to vote the factor that's in that CIP rate category on the class factor, which if you chose C, is 1.601 you'll see there. And if you choose A, it's 1.602. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is an open public meeting. So, Mr. Priest, do you have anybody that's called you or talked to you that would like to speak? Or to somebody out there that would like to say something about the tax rate, please? Don't jump in on each other, but.
Nothing on Facebook, Mr. Chairman.
There's nothing on Facebook, Betty?
No.
There's nothing out there. Is there anybody in the meeting right now that would like to speak? I don't hear anything, so I will take a motion to close the public hearing at this point.
Double.
Motion by Bob, second by.
Second.
Jimmy?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please, to close the public meeting. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. So the public meeting is closed. Now, gentlemen, at this point, I think we're all I think we all know what we're going to do. I just don't know which option we're going to go with here. I kind of go with, oh, Mr. Hogan, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I was going to let you finish your thought, and then I was going to make the motion.
Okay. Go ahead. Make your motion.
All right. Although Mr. Doherty took my thunder, I will repeat what he said and make it into a motion form and go with option C. Again, they're so close, and if that's the one that the financial team determines is the better of the two, I'm going to go with that with the class factor being 1.601. That's the motion for the tax classification.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Nick Priest, second that?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, we're going to go right down the list again on the vote for option C. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
No.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
So 401, Betty?
421. 420, 410, I believe.
410, right. What did I say? I got those zero at the end there. Sorry.
Thank you.
I we both got a zero just in the wrong place. All right. Taxes are done. Mr. Sagorino, I believe we're going to move on.
Thank you very much to the board and also to the finance team for all the work they did on that. Really an extraordinary year and I feel like we got through it okay so far, but next year is the big one. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, several weeks ago, the board had requested an update on our progress in moving towards the MWR. Public Works Director John Sanchez is here with an update and is available for questions for the board from the board.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody. So I'm here to answer questions, but I'm going to try to like give you like three highlights that have happened over the last few weeks. And I want to start with probably the most important one, which is that at the meeting of the Water Resources Commission on November 12th, which would have been last week, the commission voted to approve our inter-bank transfer so we can join the MWR. That was probably the biggest step that we needed to take in addition to actually building the pipe. And that actually happened last week. If you recall, Town Meeting in 2018 gave us a go ahead to join the authority. We started the permitting right away. And it's taken us closest two and a half years to get to where we are right now. We are literally a couple of meetings away from actually being a a member of the NWR, but the meetings that are left will be the we'll call them the friendly, easier ones. The difficult ones, we're going through all the MIPA process and the Water Resources Commission process. So that's as far as permitting. I think we're doing pretty good in there. Paul has been participating in those meetings with us and and it's been very educational meetings, I'm going to call it. On the other hand, we we decided that we're going to go forward and and do Phase One construction in a parallel way to so we don't waste any time. And as you know, we put the project out to bid, out to construction. And we, in fact, connected the pipe to our system from Lexington all the way to the Middlesex Turnpike just last week. The final connection was made, and that water main has been tested. And it's so right now it is almost complete. I'm going to call it 90, 95% complete. But those are tremendous news. At least Phase One, compounded by the fact that we'll get a permit, will allow us to have that extra million gallons of water that we lost to the one for the Alexan. And this is all happening right now, literally the last couple of weeks, and it will continue for the next couple of weeks. So so those are great news. We also started design of the next phase, and this is the phase that is going to take us from the end of Adam Street all the way into Arlington. And our goal is to start construction during construction season 2021 and complete by the end of 2022. And that pipe is what is going to allow us to abandon the Vine Brook Truman plant because that line will provide the entire capacity that currently is provided by the Vine Brook Truman facility. Again, I tried to narrow the scope, but I do have a lot of other points that I can make about how the process went, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. We'll start with Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I actually have no questions. I I'm thrilled to hear that we were approved. I think that it's it's absolutely wonderful. I think that, you know, this is one of those those big projects. This is those multimillion dollar projects that I think we all, you know, get very antsy and anxious about. And, you know, I just want to thank you and and your team for, you know, shepherding it forward with with gloves on, you know, to ensure that, you know, our anxiety is well managed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tigas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, would you speculate to say that we are ahead of schedule at this point?
No, I'll say that Phase One, we had projected that we're going to complete it by the end of this year, the end of 2020. So we are we're on schedule for that phase. However, I'll say that we are ahead of schedule for Phase Two. Phase Two was a phase where we're going to wait a little longer to actually start even design. And and as you know, we went to town meeting in the spring and town meeting did appropriate the funds for us to start designing sooner. So Phase Two is probably a couple of years ahead of schedule compared to the original plan that we have proposed a couple of years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Yeah, that's kind of I was trying to the the project project in totality is kind of what I was asking. Will this will this new connection do anything to the water ban? In other words, will we be able to not go into water bans, or can we lift at some point, lift the one we're in? How will this impact the current water ban?
So in in order to to comply with all the permits that we have, some sort of water ban will have to continue into the future. I will say that in the next couple of years, it it will be needed because 1 million gallons a day that we're going to get from this line doesn't take care of the the huge demands that we see in the summertime. So the next couple of years, we will see a relief. They will probably not be as often or not as difficult. But I I will tell you that over the next couple of years, we definitely will have some sort of bans, particularly if we have a drought. As you know, 2020, we had a drought pretty much the entire summer. And again, we we can't control the weather. So assuming that we'll have a year similar to 2020, more than likely, we'll have some kind of a ban going. Again, it probably wouldn't be as stringent as what we have right now, but there will probably be one.
Thank you, John. Please don't say we're going to have another year like 2020. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Sanchez, I have to say there's 2020 related everything but locusts so far. And I don't think that's not too far away, I guess. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to note the I just can't imagine the amount of red tape necessary to to get this project done. I appreciate the frequent updates we get from both John and Mr. Sagorino. And then I just to let you know that your efforts have certainly not gone unnoticed, and I and I thank you again for all the time you guys have put into this. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, John, thank you for all the work you've done and for getting us to to get off center on this a couple of years ago so we could start moving forward. And it's nice to hear that the overall project is is moving ahead, and the town is going to be a lot better off because of that. And and maybe maybe what we'll do is, at least in the Burlington section, is name a section of the sewer pipe after you and put your name on it.
You called a sewer pipe? How about a water pipe?
Oh, my God. The Sanchez stream.
Thank you, Bob.
Just thinking of you, John.
Okay, I have nothing to add to that, gentlemen. No, John, actually, thank you for all the updates. It's great to hear what's going on with this. So thank you very much. Once again, another another outstanding staff work by everybody in your office. So thank you very much.
I'll pass it along. It's been a team effort here all throughout.
Well, it wasn't. We all know if it wasn't for Rachel, you know, the office would be probably falling apart at this point.
I hear you. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item is we have Council on Aging Director here, Madge McDonald. She wants to give the board an update on COA operations and specifically to give you an update on a great program that she's running with the support of Leahy. Thank you, Madge. Welcome.
Thanks, Paul. Hi, everyone. So we've actually been a lot busier, believe it or not, in the last 10 months than we have been in previous months, trying to learn new ways of doing things and figuring out how to make sure we're reaching everybody and keeping everybody safe. I think we've learned about social isolation a little more intimately than we wanted to over the last several months. So I think a lot of people have a much better idea of what many of our seniors go through. So we are our number one goal since we shut down in March is to keep connected to all of the seniors that we face this, make sure we're there for folks that we don't know and make sure they know that we're there for them as well. The newsletter is continuing to go out to everybody who owns a home in Burlington that is over 60. We did not miss a month for that, which was extremely important. I I heard some feedback that several councils in aging figuring they had no activities. They didn't need to continue to reach out, but our back has always been that that's the newsletter is one of the lifelines for them. So what I've been trying to do is to provide something for everyone each month, be it social work, or it's going out to the homes and visiting people, you know, socially distanced outside and helping them out. Do you know, keeping our support groups going online, the Memory Cafe, which I'll get to again in a second. We're doing lectures, fitness classes. We've had music concerts, which I have to say don't go as well online as other things do. The Memory Cafe and the Grab and Go is which is the main reason I'm here. We have seen the social workers during the month of October have saw over 100 people individually, you know, one on, you know, one on one. And since March 13th, they've seen over 340 people for a very, I think the number was like 1,400 contacts for those folks. It's a lot in that short period of time for us. You know, some some contacts are five minutes and some are hours as you try to figure out. Especially now, you know, if you have an application you're filling out, they have to go take them the paperwork. Find the paperwork that they that they need, and then they have to take it all back to the office, copy it, and then bring it back to them, get their signature. So it takes hours rather than, you know, an hour. So we are we're very fortunate. We have a lot of support from the town and the state. I have to report that the state is looking to level fund the COAs, knowing how much we've been all been doing across the state. Our third largest funder happens to be Leahy, right here in town. And they have agreed funding a lot of things. We could not be what we are without Leahy, to be honest with you, with activities and such. They fund a farmer's market, 50 CSA shares for seniors that we started doing in the Grab and Go method in June. And what would happen is, you know, we have the seniors line up around the building. And then at 1:00, we would start giving out the shares. We used to do the farmer's market in the Mary Kelly Wing. Obviously, that could not happen. This was extremely helpful for many of the seniors that did not want to go to the grocery store just to get some fresh fruits and vegetables every week. They also pay for our Memory Cafe, which is for folk with cognitive issues and their care partners. That was a little more difficult. We found that a lot of folks with cognitive issues, particularly Alzheimer's, have trouble with the computer. They don't understand what's going on in a Zoom call. So that's that's been a little tough. And it wasn't until September that we were able to get those back and running. Leahy also pays for all of our fitness classes, which is awesome and has been extremely helpful. One of our fitness classes literally did not miss a beat. It was just one class before we were up and running on Zoom. And then the Grab and Goes, Leahy offered to pay to help support the Grab and Goes for us. Now, the Grab and Goes, I don't, you know, like I said, you know, you kind of go around the building. What folks have been discovering across the state with the Grab and Goes is that for for many, we're the only contact of that week, that month. Still a lot of seniors that aren't leaving their homes, and this gives all of the COAs across the state a chance to touch base and look at somebody and see if, you know, we can tell if they're okay. So while they're standing in line, the social workers are chatting with them and and seeing what's going on. And I probably shouldn't tell our secrets, give our secrets away on this, but you know, kind of checking them out. Have they lost weight? Have they gained weight? Do they seem clear? Do they, you know, are they they know where that, you know, what's going on around them? You know, sometimes they can get in the car and drive and they're not okay. But it's also really great for them because it cuts down their social life a little, just a little teeny bit. And they get to see us as well. You know, we've formed a lot of relationships over the years with a lot of the seniors that come to the center and to have that cut off, you know, all of them at the center and they're not getting to see them. And a lot of times, they don't even have their phone numbers. You know, they just always see each other at the center. So the Grab and Goes have been huge. And we've had people getting out of their cars and just talking to each other socially distanced. So I pretend I don't see that. I admit it. You know, and it's just been it's been a really great. It's our best. I think it's probably our best program getting through this pandemic in terms of making sure our seniors are are staying healthy and staying well mentally, getting them out of the house. During the last Grab and Go, I had one senior tell me that this is the best thing that happened to her. that happened to her all week, which I have to admit, I kind of feel the same way in many ways. And then we had another senior tell us that, you know, the cupcake we gave them for Halloween was nice and all, but it was really seeing us that it made her feel good. So, you know, if you can give them that little bit, you know, some of them aren't even allowing their kids into their house because they just don't trust them and where they've been. So this is really it for them. We're continuing to provide fuel assistance, SNAP assistance for applications. We are now actually officially a an outreach partner with SNAP. So we get a little bit of reimbursement when we help with applications, which is nice. And that pays, that is going to help us pay for the outreach, the part-time outreach position. Going. We're in the middle of a, and the big news that we actually have is our, one of our van drivers is going to be retiring next week. So we wish her well, although we can't have a big party for her. But and we will not be replacing her until we reopen. So we'll just have one van driver going forward. And that's it. Thank you. Sorry, I know that was long. I haven't seen you all in a while.
Thank you, Marge. Let's stop comments. Michael.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marge, just you you mentioned the newsletter. I happen to be a recipient of the newsletter. Joe, are you getting one of those things yet? You should be getting one, yourself. But they are, they are chock full of some good information, Marge. And also kudos to you and your staff for for being so creative in these challenging times. Appreciate all the work that you guys do there. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan. Mr. Hogan, any comments?
Just just that, what Michael said at the end. The COA staff really takes on a great deal and and returns a great deal to the community. And Marge is is a big part of that. I think the seniors are all better off because of it. So congratulations and thank you, Marge.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Priest.
Thanks, Chairman. Just quickly echo the same sentiments as Sleckman, Hogan, and Runyon. You know, Marge, you and your staff always, you know, doing a great job. And it shows, you know, and really appreciate you being there for the seniors of this community. You know, the fact that you are that one touch point for them, you know, I'm sure means obviously a great deal to them, it means a great deal to us. And I think it's great that, you know, you're continuing to partner with with Leahy to do those grab and go lunches. It's fantastic. So thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tigas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I am not receiving the newsletter. But, you know, we see everything the council aging does when we see all the residents, you know, well, prior to COVID, attending events and the services that are available. But it's a lot, a lot of it is the stuff we don't see. And, you know, you really can't, and Marge can't go around telling us about everything that they do behind the scenes or in confidentiality. But they do so much that we don't see that, Marge, I just want to thank you and your staff for, again, I've always heard positive comments from residents, you know, those that attend and just those that need any assistance. So just keep up the good work.
Thanks, Jim.
Marge, I guess I'm last. I don't know what else to say. I mean, everyone has said everything that you could possibly say. I even got the message I should be getting a newsletter. So would you like my address after the meeting? You can start sending me a letter, I guess. I'm at that special age. But no, Marge, honestly, you do a great job up there. We all know that. Everyone, everyone has always said how well their programs run up there. It all comes down to you. So kudos to you and thank you for everything you've done for the town and what you're going to do for the town. Because you're not going anywhere right away. We know that.
No, not for a while.
That's right. There we go. See, got to keep the good ones around. Mike, you can go.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Marge. Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marge. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we received a request from a resident, Jennifer O'Reardon, for a proclamation to recognize National Radiologic Technologist Week. I think I saw Jen is in the meeting here with us, so I'd like to turn it over to her.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Sagarino, and thank you to the, to all of you that are here in the Board of Selectmen. I did receive the official proclamation and I shared it with my colleagues at Leahy. This proclamation is regarded to the fact that last week was National Radiologic Technologist Week, recognizing all of the radiation workers that work all across the country, but specifically at Leahy, I was looking for some recognition for them. This is a group of several hundred colleagues that work tirelessly, you know, getting images, doing radiation therapy, helping patients, especially during the this past year, which has been a year. They they've worked even harder and often behind the scenes. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time to write this proclamation and sign it. It really means a lot to all of them. So on behalf of Leahy Hospital and Medical Center and the the radiation technologists that work there, I wanted to just say thank you for that recognition. It really means a lot to all of them and they're they're a great group. A lot of them are, you know, residents themselves of the town or the surrounding towns. So it's a great thing to recognize the hard work. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Sagarino, back to you. We have a, she has a proclamation. Do we have someone that's going to read that or was it just, did we give it to her?
I bet he was out in the packet. If anyone would like to read it.
Does somebody have that in their package right now? They could read that?
I have it up.
You're the best. Thank you, Nick.
Absolutely. So whereas the health of our citizens is a major concern and responsibility of healthcare professionals serving the citizens of Burlington and the surrounding communities, and whereas qualified practitioners who specialize in the use of medical radiation and imaging technology to aid in diagnosis and treatment of disease share a commitment to bring the people of this community safer and more compassionate environment now and in the future. And whereas professionals in the radiologic sciences are dedicated to the highest standard of professionalism and continually maintain those standards through education, lifelong learning, credentials, credential, there we go, and personal commitment. And whereas November 8th through 14th, 2020 has been designated National Radiologic Technology Week to focus on the safe medical radiation environment provided through the skilled and conscientious efforts of radiologic technologists. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of Burlington, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim November 8th through 14th, 2020, Radiologic Technology Week in Burlington and urge all of our citizens to recognize this event and participate in its observance, given under our hand this 16th day of November, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Let's start with Mr. Hogan.
Well, Jennifer, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I had the opportunity of having something found in me that required major surgery back last February that would not have been noticed if it wasn't for the the skills of the radiologists and everybody right down the line who was able to take care of that. So thank you, thank them, and God bless them.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman. That would be you, Jim.
I know. I'm trying to get the, I have a connection issue here, but, all right. Well, anyway, again, I just wanted, well, to thank you and, you know, Leahy is so, is such a great resource here in Burlington. Sometimes we just forget it's it's just in our backyard. But, you know, I wish we could honor and give a proclamation to all the employees or all the departments. But again, you're part of Leahy and, you know, we want to just say thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I too would like to thank Jennifer for bringing that to our attention. It was an honor to sign my name to that that proclamation. Thank you again, Jim.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I echo the same sentiments as the rest of the board, Jennifer, and, you know, thank you and your team for everything that you do here in town. And of course, you know, recognizing all radiologists and imaging experts across the nation, you know, for everything that they do. You know, it's like, like Sleckman Hogan said, you know, you're seeing things that we otherwise wouldn't see and in doing so, you're saving lives. And for that, I think we're eternally grateful. So thank you.
So I'm always last. And Jennifer, let me say thank you very much. Me and Mr. Hogan have used your radiology up there a couple of times. And for that reason, we're both sitting here today, being able to do what we're doing right now. I'm up there every single Monday with my dad at different intervals of the hospital. So I want to congratulate you on this. But the hospital is, like Mr. Tigas said, is a godsend to be in this town. We're very, very lucky to have it in, one of the best hospitals around. So thank you very much for what you do and we were more than happy to sign those papers for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have a continuation of a discussion from several weeks ago about the proposal for stone benches in the Sculpture Park area.
Absolutely. So I see Mr. Sag is here and George is here again. So I believe, Mr. Runyon, you started with the, with the, oh, my God, I lost my track of thought. Who has counsel, who has the piece of land over there that they're using?
Historical Committee.
Historical, that's the one I was, I was going to say council on aging. We just got done with that. But anyway, so Mike, what was, what was their big concern? We got, I think everybody got their map, got what they had before. So I think that was the concern before. So Mike, you want to go from there?
Sure. Yeah, no, no, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I just wanted to tap the brakes at the last meeting when we were having this discussion because I knew there was an interest from the Historical Committee for potential uses of the site. So my my concern was that everybody, both parties, had a seat at the table and the left hand knew what the right hand was doing and and so on and so forth. And I think most of the board has has received some, some emails and other information from Historical Committee to indeed let you know that they do have an interest on the site. So with with that in mind, you know, I think we can can proceed with benches if if that's what they, you know, if that's what the proponents care to do. But I just wanted everybody to be aware that there are, two groups of people have an interest in the same site and we're going to find some sort of common ground. That's that was my only issue.
Thank you, sir. Before I let the rest of the board speak at this point, Jonathan, go ahead.
Yeah, we actually had a Sculpture Park meeting right after the selectmen meeting and we discussed this. And our conclusion was a couple of things. One is when we looked at putting benches over on the other side near the the big dog and decided that there's already benches there, so it wouldn't make any sense to put the stone bench there. And if we put it right by the dog, it would be in a kind of a weird place where you're just looking out the street. All right, I just heard a repeat.
Who's speaking beside you?
Okay, I think somebody has the TV running. So what we thought was that, first of all, if it comes to pass that toward the end of our two-year allowed period, if the Historical Commission does have a plan and does have funding to move in there, then we would move to the next step and try to figure out another place to move the Sculpture Park. And we think that we could, at that point, offer, the benches are going to be made out of Burlington stone material taken from Mary Cummings Park. And we would probably just offer to leave them there if they want them. And if, because I don't, our feeling was that stone benches would not be an insult to a historical site, the way colored sculptures might be seen. If they don't want them, then if we're going to take the sculptures out by brute force, we would take the benches, too. And that's basically what we said, you know, if if they, if they're actively going to move ahead, then we'll.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, who's?
Bob Buckley. How are you? I'd like to weigh in on this because I feel somewhat responsible. I'm the one who donated the money for the benches. And I did it because I think that it should be attributed to the students at the Burlington School System who played such an active role in this endeavor to put something different in Burlington. And the involvement, as George can attest to, of the students was tremendous. So I I suggested that some benches be put there because people go up there, they can look at it, they can sit, and they should be dedicated to the the efforts of the Burlington students in this endeavor. And they, as Jonathan indicated at the end, if this is not going to become a fixture, then they could be moved as well as the sculptures. And they can either be relocated, perhaps under common, but they will reflect some of the historical nature and characteristics of the community. And I think we'll be unique.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Priest. You're on the Sculpture Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, you know, I think, you know, first off, you know, I'm glad that Sleckman and Runyon bumped the brakes at our last meeting, you know, to afford the opportunity for Historical Committee to, or Commission to weigh in. You know, I'm glad that they did, you know, and I mean, you know, it seems like, you know, everyone is more or less on the same page, you know. But at this point, you know, Sculpture Park, you know, has claimed the land for the the next two years. You know, I think that, I mean, you know, to be able to have the students involved, you know, in a in a more physical way and make this a part of the curriculum and have them engaged in it, I find very intriguing, you know, beyond just having benches there for sitting and, you know, you know, sculptured, sculpted. So, you know, I would, you know, at some point, Mr. Chairman, like to ask the Historical Commission to come in and speak to us about the future plans that they have on that site. I'd love to hear more about, you know, what they're, you know, thinking and, you know, generally, I mean, I think that this board should support the historical, you know, nature of the community more so, you know, and bring that more into the forefront. I know Sleckman, Runyon, and I have had these conversations and I've spoken with other members of the Sculpture Park Committee about, you know, trying to, you know, create more of a, you know, diverse communication between the two, you know, bodies. But, you know, I would be in favor of these benches. I think that, you know, should, when the two-year mark runs up, you know, the Historical Commission want to move in and Sculpture Park move out, the benches can go up to the sculptures. So, you know, they're a movable thing.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan. You're still on mute, Bob.
I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to add to it tonight. The Sculpture Park is there right now. And like Nick said, we should probably listen to what the Historical Commission has to say as far as what they had anticipated. And so I, right now, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tigas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have no objection to the benches going there. Like, they, the Historical Commission may want to keep them. If they do, that's great. If they don't want to keep them, they can be removed. So I have no issue with them going there during the, you know, duration while the sculptures are there.
Okay, thank you. So let me, let me just understand this. We're going to be voting on the fact whether or not we want to put stone benches in there right now for the next two years, possibly longer. If the Historical Mission does have the plans for the garden that we all saw, I'm sure everyone got an email on that as far as the selectmen goes, they talked about a garden. And then at that point, if they really want to do that and we want the Sculpture Park to move, we'll find a place for the Sculpture Park to go, whether it's separated throughout the town common, which could be a nice, a nice spot for it or different spots of the common. So is there any more comments on this? George, you're sitting there, nothing to say or maybe you do have something to say?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, you've all seen the kind of benches that are, would be made, correct? You get a sense of that. And they fit, I think they fit really well in with with something that is more historic anyway. But even if they didn't, again, it wouldn't be a problem to move them. The other thing is, in terms The other thing is in terms of our, in terms of our school involvement, I'd like to have our students involved in this, not just for the next year or two, but ongoing, constantly finding activities for them to do. And this would be one of many things over the years that, no matter where this, where the Sculpture Park is, it's one of many things that they need to be involved in. It's a place in town that we could have in-school field trips that are easy to get to. And, you know, it could be, we could have opportunities to figure drawing and just working around the sculptures, not just with the sculptures. But it's a good site to actually learn, learn just art in general and observation. But building the stone, the stone benches would be an opportunity for, again, I've got a couple of teachers who are interested in involving their students in it. And it would be great to, just as an extension of what they're doing in the school, in the classroom.
Thank you, George. So I think, gentlemen, at this point here, it's basically a fact of whether or not we want to take a vote on this tonight to have the benches in or out, basically is the bottom line. So I would entertain a motion at this point. Anyone like to make a motion to keep, Mike, you want to speak or you got a motion?
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the stone benches on the site.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Mike, second by Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Michael if you'd like to make an amendment? We talked last time about three stone seating areas. Are we still talking three?
Okay, well, we'll make it, motion is for three stone benches.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go through a roll call vote, gentlemen, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiggas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. So the motion is made, seconded and voted on. You're allowed to put three benches in there for the next two years and we'll go from there. Thank you very much for donating your time and your money for this.
You know, Joe, Joe, it's really the students, you know, it was, my eyes were open to involvement and the talents that reside in the Burlington School System.
So let me just add that.
Compliment and run, brother.
By the way, our plan is to try to squeeze one in before the winter hits hard and then do two in the spring.
Well, that's your plan. George, how do you feel about that?
It'd be great if we can do that.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen.
Everyone stay healthy, please. Everyone stay healthy, have a nice holiday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. All right. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item, I will be asking the board for a vote to terminate a rental agreement that we have had on a piece of town property on Adams Street. We have had discussions for several years with the renter about our need to take back the property for municipal use. This property is now needed for our MWR A project in order to construct a small outbuilding. John Sanchez is here, he can give us a closer description as to what's that actual thing is. It's not a building, but more of, probably look more like a pump station, John. And in order to do that, we need to terminate this rental agreement at this point. John Sanchez is here in the meeting to ask if there are any additional, if there are any additional questions to your board.
So, gentlemen, what we'll do now is we're just going to go with the questions. If someone asked it, don't get to go in, we'll see what happens. Mr. Priest, we're going to start with you on this one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanchez, just a two-part question. What is being built? You know, building, shed, pump station, I'm just trying to get some clarification. And how much land is required of it?
So as far as the building itself, it's going to be a chemical feed station. So we're going to try to make it look like a pump station so it fits in the area. And it'll have to have, you know, eventually the ability to have chemical addition to the water that is coming from the MWR A. We are required to do that as part of the permitting process. And we're going to try to build it as close to the street as we can. However, in order to build it, because of the site, I mean, you've seen Adams Street, how narrow it is. In order to build it, we need the site for the staging area. So the contractor can actually move all the equipment, trucks, anything he needs for construction into the site so he can actually build it from behind. Because of the topography of that area, we're going to try to make it two stories, only because if you've seen Adams Street, a street level immediately drops down to, with the areas right behind it, as Paul liked to call it, to the flood plain behind it. So we tried to build it to serve for that reason. But again, it's more for construction right now that we need to have that property. And then into the future, always is a town-owned property that we will, you know, with the town owns. So the DPO will have uses for coming into the future as well.
Okay, great. And Mr. Chairman, just a quick follow-up for me?
Yes, sir.
How much maintenance, John, does this chemical feed building require? Like, is it, I mean, will folks be there every day? Like, how often are trucks going to be coming and going, once we're up and running?
So once that we get the facility running, it'll, somebody will probably have to go there daily to see, you know, if we're taking water and we're adding chemicals, we'll have to check it daily. I mean, we'll have skate out so we'll be able to remotely see what is happening. But like any other facility, you can't leave it alone without actually seeing that what you see in the computer is what is happening over there.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tiggas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, how big of a building are we anticipating?
It's been designed right now, but probably like 24 feet by maybe 30 or 40 feet.
What about, I mean, that's a pretty big site. Is there any other use we can think of that might work over there in addition to this? Well, we're getting, I mean, we're getting property, so.
So the property's in the flood plain, Jim. So that's why the building is coming near the road, where it's outside of the flood plain. Everything else on that side falls within the flood plain.
I was, because I was thinking something like passive recreation where people might be able to sit, I know there's like a pond back there they could sit or just something, just trying to think of another way of trying to put some use to that land other than that one building in a big area of land. That's all.
And again, this would be something that we can talk about into the future. It wouldn't, any other use wouldn't, the building is not going to preclude any other use because the building is coming near the road.
All right, I'm just, I guess, I was just thinking, an area people can go and sit and maybe have a coffee or something and look at the water. I'm just trying to think off the top of my head. That's all.
Y'all set yet? Mr. Hogan?
I think I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine with pursuing the termination. I would just ask, John, maybe could send us a site map, perhaps? Give us a little better idea of what we're, the parcel looks like. That's all.
Sure.
Okay. So I think we're all set on this. Yeah, I've already, yeah, I'm good with questions. I've already heard it all. So I will entertain a motion at this point. Motion by Mike, second by Mr. Priest. Okay, roll call vote, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiggas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. There you go. Five zero zero, all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is also a continuation of a discussion from several weeks ago. If the board wishes to bring forward the Select Board Selectment Name Changing Initiative to the January Town Meeting, we'll need a decision tonight so that we can begin the review process at our other elected and appointed boards. I know you have received several positive, overwhelmingly positive letters and emails on this from residents. It seems like the only remaining item of the discussion would be what to switch the name to. As you guys know, I'm kind of boring, so my suggestion would be to go with Select Board, as many other towns in Massachusetts have done. But clearly, there's been some differences of opinion on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to the, back to you, Mr. Chairman, and hopefully we can get to a resolution on this tonight.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to go right to Mr. Tiggas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Select?
I kind of concur with what Paul said. A lot of towns are shifting to the Select Board. I have no objection to that suggestion. You know, it's 2020, so we have to kind of think 2020. So I have no issue with that particular term.
Okay. Mr. Runyon?
Are you looking for a recommendation? I'll...
Anything you'd like to say, Mike?
Executive Board sounds better than Select Board to me. That's what, that would be my preference.
Okay. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too think that, because I will still be a selectman on the Select Board. And if a woman were to get on, she could be a selectwoman on the Select Board. Other names like Town Council can be confusing because Town Council and Town Council could confuse the conversation if someone were to write it and misspell it. So I would concur that Paul is probably boring, but we'll go with Select Board.
Okay, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not just boring, it's historic. Well, I mean, you know, we get to maintain the historical reason why the Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, you know, is a selected board. You know, I had the same thoughts as Selectman Hogan. I got caught up, you know, in the Town Council, you know, versus Select Board versus Executive Board, you know, thought, probably put more thought into it than was probably, you know, required of the pea brain in my head. But I agree, I think, you know, Select Board is probably the way to go, you know, it maintains continuity with a lot of the other communities that have changed over to some of that nature. It maintains the historical aspect of, you know, the origination of the board itself. And, you know, we, I mean, should, should an individual want to refer themselves as a selectman or a selectwoman, they absolutely have the right to do so, or someone can say they're a Select Board member, you know, and we have that opportunity for folks as well. So I'd be in favor of Select Board taking the vanilla flavor on this one. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I don't know, I'm going to give you my opinion. I'm not for reelection, see, I got a thousand signs that say selectmen. We have to change them. Just thought I'd bring that up. But I really, honestly, whatever you guys want to do, Select Board, Executive Board, Ed Poobah, it's just, it's just a name and a title. I mean, if you do the right thing, you're all set. I'll take a motion at this point, whatever you want to do.
I think, Paul, did you want to say something? Sorry, I saw him.
Oh, Paul.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that once this is approved by Town Meeting, there's a, I believe that part of it may need to go to the legislature, so it's not going to be something that happens overnight. So my gut feeling is by April, we'll still be a Board of Selectmen technically, just in terms of...
Keep my sights open. Gentlemen, honestly, in today's world, today's society, things have to change. Some of us don't understand it, but some of us do understand it. The way things are in the world, everything has changed. It's not what it used to be and it's not going to be what it once was. So if somebody would like to entertain a motion for Executive, if someone wants to entertain a motion for Select Board, wide open right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, change our name to the Select Board.
Motion made and seconded. All of those in favor? The roll call vote, right, Betty? Mr. Hogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiggas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi? Yes. There you go. Start the process, Paul.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate that. So the next agenda item is just sort of an update on Town Meeting. Betty has, aside from those articles on the Select Board Initiative, which I believe will result in three separate articles, a general bylaw article, a zoning bylaw article, and also a general article that needs to go to the legislature. We did receive two other zoning articles at this point. We do have the official financial deadline for January Town Meeting is, I believe, December 11th, Betty. Correct me if I'm wrong on that one. So we will be talking about January Town Meeting at our next couple of meetings upcoming. So just, that was just an update for the board on where we are in terms of January Town Meeting.
Thank you very much. Somebody like to approve the minutes? September 28, 2020. Mr. Runyon, motion that? Right, you second on that? Second, Mr. Priest? Roll call vote, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tiggas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Select Committee reports, we'll start with Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Tiggas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just give me one sec, I got to bring an update from the Fire Department. Chief Patterson wanted me to advise you that on Sunday, November 8th, dispatcher Elaine Coppa received a 911 call around 10:40 a.m. from a caller saying his girlfriend had just given birth in an automobile. Dispatcher Coppa first asked about the health of the baby, was the baby breathing and was the baby moving and making noise? She then had to determine the location of the vehicle. The caller first reported her chambers, but after being questioned, he reported he just drove into Cafe Escondido. She then had to dispatch Fire Department units to the scene. At the same time, there were multiple calls going on in town, so she had to determine who was available to respond. Both police and fire responded to the call. The mother and baby, who appeared healthy, were then transported to the hospital by ambulance and Armstrong paramedics. He would like to thank the, acknowledge, and we all want to acknowledge the great work done by dispatcher Elaine Coppa and for all the members of both departments who responded to the call. And as he indicates, our fire dispatches provide a valuable service to our community and must remain at the ready for any type of emergency. That's a great story, but he also wanted me to add one more thing with the holidays coming right around the corner. He wanted to let people know about important safety, cooking safety tips. These are his words. Stand by your pan when cooking. Never leave food, grease or oils cooking on the stove top unattended. Put a lid on it. In case of a fire, slide the lid on to smother the fire, then turn off the heat. Do not move the pan until it's cooled off. Water or fire extinguishers will not work, they only spread fire. Never move a burning pan, you can be badly burned or spread the fire. And wear short or tight-fitting clothes, tight-fitting sleeves when cooking because loose-fitting clothing can easily catch you on fire. And if for some reason you do end up igniting your clothing, stop, drop, cover and roll to put out the flames. And that's a Fire Department update.
Thank you very much. Let's go with Mr. Hogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment to congratulate the Office of Veterans Services, Chris Hanifin and Jennifer for the Veterans Day, the virtual Veterans Day ceremony this past week. It's difficult when people are expecting a gathering where they can be together and be part of a ceremony remembering the veterans of this, of this great country. I also want to acknowledge that the speaker, a gentleman in his mid-90s, George Bud Hollenbeck was the guest speaker, he was aboard the USS Pennsylvania in Pearl Harbor on December 7th back in 1941 and had a story to tell. So I thank Chris for finding him and Reverend Francesco Passamonte always brings words of faith to those ceremonies. So congratulations to Chris and to Jennifer and for all the people that participated in still this very different kind of ceremony. So... So, uh, congratulations and thank you and, uh, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you very much. Mr. Runyon?
I'd say, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, want to react to, uh, Selectman Tigas's comments. I wasn't aware of, uh, of that call, but uh, I, I do know that, uh, Elaine Coppin there for, for years and years has, uh, you know, handled these multiple call situations uh, like a true champion, uh, time and, and time and time again. So congratulations once again to Elaine and good job as, as always. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, that's incredible. Uh, you know, um, Elaine and then, and, and the baby and, uh, you know, uh, Chris Hanifin and, uh, you know, Veterans Day. I mean, just some amazing, amazing things. And I apologize for editorializing, uh, you know, prior comments. But, you know, it is, it is truly amazing and, um, you know, um, it's, it's moments like, like these that, you know, make you proud to be, you know, a member of the community. Just a, just a quick note, um, after appointing, um, uh, the, uh, members to the new ISAC, uh, at our last meeting, uh, they are now prepared to, uh, get their first meeting underway early December. So they're hitting the ground running. It's good to see, uh, them already, uh, starting to get the ball rolling. But otherwise, nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, gentlemen, I really don't have anything to talk about. Uh, I am going to go visit the site, uh, where the new DPW bond is next week. I hope to, uh, get over there quick because I didn't get there this week. But, you know, I sat here tonight and I listened to a lot, a lot of people that were thanked tonight and all the Burlington employees. We went from John Sanchez's office, uh, to Rachel up there, to, uh, Marge McArnold, she did a great job. And it just amazes me that we sit back and what a great staff of people we have working for this town. So, uh, all I can do is say thank you to everybody at this point. I'm going to go to, uh, Mr. Sagorino. See what he's got for a report, if anything.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it will be difficult to talk about Selectman Tigas's, uh, cooking tips, uh, for Thanksgiving, but, um, Mr. Hogan did, uh, cover the veterans ceremony. Uh, if any residents out there, hopefully it's being replayed on BCAT. Had an interview with quite, um, quite an American, uh, who was at Pearl Harbor. So it's really, it's really interesting. If anybody has an opportunity, uh, please check that out on BCAT. The only other thing I wanted to add is, uh, our Economic Development Director, in conjunction with the Economic Development Subcommittee, they're basically holding a virtual online coffee hour, uh, for residents to just sort of, uh, log in, share your ideas for what you'd like to see in town, uh, ask questions about, uh, what's going on in town from a business and economic development standpoint. And, uh, it's the first one. Uh, so it's a trial run, but we hope to have these on a fairly regular basis where we can sort of have back and forth discussions with our residents, just on what they're hearing, what they're seeing, what they would like to see. And, you know, good ideas and we can sort of, uh, inform folks about what's going on in town. Uh, so that'll take place, uh, with Melissa, myself, uh, our Board of Selectmen Economic Development Subcommittee, uh, that would be Mike and Nick. Uh, also the Playing Board Subcommittee on Economic Development, uh, which is Michael Spahoe and Brenda Rappaport. So, uh, the date on that one is Tuesday, 24th of November at 9:00 a.m. And, uh, the information is on the town calendar in terms of how to log into that virtually. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody in the public out there that would like to speak right now? Betty, do we have anybody? Nick? No, nobody? Okay. Uh, Mr. Dinesio, you hanging around because you have something we'd like to bring up or talk to us about? Oh, Mr. Sagorino's got his hand up.
Just want to, uh, remind the board that we have a very brief executive session, so, uh, after this meeting. So if you could just look for, uh, the invitation and, uh, if possible, I would ask, um, if, if a board member could sort of read that, um, executive session language that's on the agenda, uh, as we adjourn.
Gentlemen, who would like to read that right now?
That's right.
All right, Chairman.
Still play that, right? We still do that?
We still do that. Go ahead.
All right. So pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, the Board of Selectmen will convene to executive session as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. In order to discuss, consider strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of General Walker Estates LLC versus Leroux et al., Land Court Document Number 20MISC000342, with the board journeying from the executive session and not reconvening an open session as is authorized by General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21b4.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We're going to take, uh, five minutes and we'll come right back to this, okay? Do their thing. All right.
Do we take them?
Joe, you need a roll call for that?
Oh, yeah, I need a roll call for that. Sorry. Thanks, Mike. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Sorry about that, guys. All in favor?
Give five minutes.
Five minutes. Be back. Thank you.